Hi Noel.
Hi, we can hear you on the screen. How you doing?
Hi Ryan.
Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, August 18th, 2021. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco's Channel 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poploski for their assistance in making this meeting available to the public at home. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 8th. Colleagues, welcome back. It's been eight weeks since I've seen you all in person. Good to see you. The first item on the agenda is public participation. We did have a request to speak at tonight's public participation. I'd like to welcome her up to the microphone. So if you just introduce yourself with your name and your address, please.
Can I use this one?
Which, yeah, I think so.
Hello? I think everybody can hear me.
Yeah, it will pick you up.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Nandana Kansara, and I am a practicing physician in our community. I live in Shrewsbury with my husband and our two children, who are part of the Shrewsbury Public System. And as a physician, I'm here today to respectfully urge the school system to institute a universal masking policy at the start of the new school year. All school personnel, visitors, and students, regardless of age or vaccination status, should wear a mask at all times covering their nose and mouth, as well as while riding the bus. While eating indoors, masks may be removed but should be put back on when leaving the table or not eating or drinking. When feasible, additional mitigation strategies, including staggered lunches, optimizing ventilation, and distancing are recommended. Masking while outdoors is not required, and outdoor activities, including eating, should be encouraged. In reviewing the COVID-19 cases from the DPH dashboard, Shrewsbury has a percentage positivity of 2.16% by molecular testing, which has only been going up in the last several weeks. In Massachusetts today, we have 558 cases of COVID-19 between the age of 0 to 4 years, 689 cases of COVID-19 between the age of 5 to 9 years. We have almost 700 cases of COVID-19 between the age of 10 to 14 years, and we have 781 cases in our teenagers in the age group of 15 to 19 years. 400 patients in all age groups are currently hospitalized in Massachusetts, of which 86 are in the ICU and 40 patients are intubated. Recent data according to the CDC shows that the current circulating strain of COVID-19 is the Delta variant, which is highly infectious. Our children less than the age of 12 are the most vulnerable and are still not vaccinated. Recent data from the series has shown that even a vaccinated person can transmit the Delta virus. Currently, in the United States, we have 4,404 children with multi-system inflammatory syndrome. This dangerous syndrome can affect the heart, the blood vessels, and the organ systems of our children, and make them very, very sick, the effects of which can last for months and years to come. Only 38% of all children in the United States have natural immunity, which by itself is not considered protective. The only way to protect our children and our school community is to institute universal masking regardless of vaccination status. I urge the school system to implement this at the start of the coming school year. I thank you once again for allowing me to participate today.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Chairperson's and Members' Reports. Colleagues, anything to report? There being nothing. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. Appreciate it. Wanted just to give a brief update to the committee and to the community regarding our activities this summer. I'd like to start off by thanking all of our educators and support personnel who helped us have a very successful extended-year program for both our special education program and our students who are English language learners that was located at Sherwood Middle School, and by all accounts, very successful. Lots of great opportunities for students to maintain and continue their learning over the summer, particularly those who have need to maintain their skills during the summer months. In addition to that, I want to thank Ms. Clouter for organizing and everyone who was involved with the First Summer Academy Program. That was a two-week program where students were invited to participate who were deemed to be at particular risk for being a bit behind as a result of the disruption of the past year, a year and a third really, as far as our school years. And it was targeted on English Language Arts and Mathematics skills. Upon visiting, it was a very engaging program, and the teachers, and want to thank everyone who was involved in putting that together. It was a successful enterprise this year for us. Also want to let the community know that the New Beale School Project is on time and on target for an opening of school on September 1st. It is a spectacular building. We can't wait to share it with the community. We are finalizing some plans to hopefully have an open house during the Spirit of Shrewsbury Weekend where people will be able to visit. In the meantime, you know, students will be arriving on September 1st. Mr. Girardi, the principal, Ms. Hoy, the assistant principal, have been hard at work. They've done an excellent job. I've been extremely impressed with the staff that they've hired, who are new to the community and the district, as well as we're going to have several transfers from existing elementary schools who are going to be coming together to have a very strong faculty and staff at the New Beale School. We'll certainly update the community as we open that. And speaking of staffing, we are in generally good shape as far as opening the new school year. All the positions that we had in the budget were filled over the course of the early part of the summer. Naturally, every year, we have some unanticipated turnover during the summer due to people, spouse, being transferred to another part of the country, someone, paraprofessionals getting opportunities to be teachers in other districts and so forth. We're in good shape with our professional hiring. At the, we're a bit behind the curve on paraprofessional. The labor market is extremely tight, where it comes particularly for ABA, Applied Behavioral Analysis, technicians who work with our students with significant special needs, especially those typically on the autism spectrum, where the special education leadership is working very hard to identify candidates and get them in prior to school starting. We'll likely start the school year down a few of those positions, and we'll make those up as quickly as we can. One thing I did want to let the committee and the community know about is that the work that was done as part of the elementary redistricting project was very much on target in terms of estimated number of students in all these new configurations across the district. There were three situations, however, where the class sizes, which are really, really good across all the schools and all the grades overall. There were three places we were monitoring carefully. Third grade at Spring Street School and third grade and fourth grade at Patton School, where class sizes already were anticipated to be tipping towards the higher end of the range, recommended range. But due to some additional move-ins in all three of those grades, and given the good news that we are well within our personnel budget for the coming year for teachers, I authorized the addition of an additional teacher at each of those grade levels to ensure that those class sizes are equitable with other schools. And particularly this year, both with trying to maintain three-foot distance where we can, as well as, most importantly, attending to the educational needs of students. Having smaller class sizes is particularly, probably more important than it's ever been and certainly in my career in Shrewsbury. So that's something that I appreciate that Dr. Lizzard, who's here this evening, is taking care of those hires at Patton, Mr. Maybe at Spring Street. And we're confident, based on some candidates we had waiting in the wings, that we'll have some strong hires to reduce those class sizes in those particular grades in those schools. But again, it's been a very productive summer. There's been a lot of work. I want to thank certainly the Public Buildings Division and for all their help in terms of cleaning, in terms of organizing, the crew of young people who are working for us, helping with moving items around the district, especially with all the reorganization at the elementary level, and that's been orchestrated by Mr. Collins. Everything's gone very smoothly, and we are anticipating a very positive opening to the school year. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Great, thank you. Dr. Sawyer, colleagues, any comments or questions before we proceed? Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. We'll receive input from medical experts on the current COVID-19 situation. Just for background, Dr. Andrea Serenello, who is the infectious disease physician at Massachusetts General Hospital, also an assistant professor of medicine at Harvard Medical School, will be presenting information to the committee on the current COVID-19 situation from the perspective of a medical expert. She'll answer any questions that we have today. Also, in our packets, we have a recommendation memo from Dr. Michael Hirsch, who's the Worcester Division of Public Health Medical Director and Chief Pandemic Information Officer. Dr. Sawyer, you want to get us started?
Sure, thank you very much. And Dr. Serenello is going to join us via Zoom in a moment. You may recall, and those watching may recall, that she joined us last year. She is a resident of Southboro, who has been extraordinarily generous with her time and expertise in consulting with the school district pro bono. And I appreciate my colleague Greg Martin, who's Superintendent of Schools in Northboro-Southboro, for being willing to share. Dr. Serenello, who was doing some volunteer consulting work there as well. Her resume speaks for itself. She's an infectious disease specialist with an excellent resume and who, at the same time, as I think you'll find, has a very down-to-earth approach and understands as from the perspective, both as a physician and researcher, as well as a parent of school-aged children. And I think her perspective on the landscape relative to opening schools and COVID is particularly valuable. So with that, I will welcome Dr. Serenello and turn it over to her. And I know she, I think she has some slides to share as well. And after her presentation, there'll be an opportunity for the committee to ask questions.
Thank you very much. Just... Okay, so you can see me, but you can't see my slides. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, let me try again. So many months into this pandemic, and still Zoom is finicky. Okay. I know that they're probably not in presenter mode, but hopefully they're bringing up that you can still see that. Does that work okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much for having me here tonight. And as Dr. Sawyer said, I have had the real privilege of working with a number of public school districts across Massachusetts over the last year or so. And we have also been collecting a lot of data from across the country and around the world to try to better understand how we can facilitate safe in-person education with regard to COVID. So I'll just have maybe 15 slides or so to share tonight that I thought would be helpful to kind of recap a lot of the information that we had the opportunity to learn last year, and then to think a little bit about how things have changed with the recent emergence of the Delta variant this year and how that might impact our thinking for this current school year. So I'll go through these pretty quickly, and then happy to take questions at the end or speak about any other topics that would be helpful. So I think, you know, this slide sort of summarizes the key lessons that we learned last year. I think first and foremost, we really do know now that children can acquire and transmit SARS-CoV-2, or the virus that causes COVID-19. The risk of an introduction of COVID into schools, meaning the chance that someone sort of walks in the door of the building with COVID, really depends on what's going on in the community around the school. But once there is an introduction into a school, the risk of onward transmission, that is, the chance that someone with COVID will spread it to someone else in the school, was actually very low last year. And that was true in schools that had kind of the full package of mitigation measures like Shrewsbury did. And of course, it was true before we had the Delta variant. Then we've also really learned a lot about how important in-person learning is for educational outcomes, social, emotional health, physical health, and mental health, sort of the whole comprehensive health of students. And the new Delta variant does add a lot of uncertainty, but we really still think that the mitigation measures and the vaccinations that we have will remain effective this year. So I'll just touch on a little bit of each of these points. These are data that was shared by one of the lead epidemiologists in pediatric SARS-CoV-2 at the CDC for the ACIP meeting where they started to think about how they were going to evaluate the safety of vaccinations for children. And the point of this data that she shared was really to share some of the best quality studies to demonstrate that children can both acquire and transmit SARS-CoV-2. So these are data from a fairly large household survey that the CDC did, where they did regular PCR testing of all household members at regular intervals, so to really try to get around some of the limitations with previous studies where the timing of who got tested first really impacted the ability to determine who infected whom. And what they basically found were that the prevalence of the virus did not vary very much by age. So these were two sites in New York and in Utah, and then overall combined. And there really was not a clear trend by age. So it was not protective against getting the virus to be a child. And then this, the second study that she showed, really looked at how likely people were to pass on SARS-CoV-2 to someone else in their household. So this, these are the risks over here. These are the age of the primary case, so the person who was infected first. These are the age of the contacts, where the people in the house who acquired or didn't acquire SARS-CoV-2 from the primary case. And then this was a combination of looking at were the index case and the contact the same age or a different age. And basically, this line that they draw here is a risk ratio of 1 compared to the reference group of 18 to 49. So each of these little dots is comparing that age group to the age group of 18 to 49. And the bars are the uncertainty range that just let us know kind of with the data that we have, how precise can that estimate be? So when that bar crosses the line of 1, it means there really was no statistically significant difference. And you can see that there really is no statistically significant difference in all of these groups, like almost all of these lines cross 1. And so what they were trying to make a point with these data is that kids can get COVID, kids can transmit COVID, and it's not really protective to be young. So another key point that we learned last year is that what happens in terms of how likely someone is to walk in the door with COVID really depends on what's going on in the community around them. So it depends on the rate of COVID-19 in their surrounding community, which in turn depends a lot currently on vaccination rates in that community. These are the data from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education during last year's school year. And what they showed is week by week, over the course of the year, the blue is the number of cases among students, and the yellow is the number of cases amongst staff. And you can see that the sort of peaks and valleys really parallel what was going on in Massachusetts overall. And right about mid-April, we started to have access to vaccinations for the educators and the public schools. And some vaccination in the community dragged, lagged a few weeks after that. And you can see that the rates really plummeted and nicely paralleled kind of what was going on in our communities. And then if there was an introduction into the schools, I think one of the most reassuring things that we learned last year was that the risk of onward transmission was very, very low. So again, these data are from last year and they're pre-Delta. But if students or staff came to school during the time at which they were infectious, so within about 48 hours before developing symptoms or before testing positive if they never had symptoms, then the chance that they transmitted to someone else in a large range of studies from all across the country was really from about 0 to 4%. And those low rates were seen in schools that had that whole package of mitigation that we talked about, which included masking, distancing, simple ventilation, so no need for sort of multimillion-dollar HVAC upgrades, but opening the windows, putting in HEPA filters, checking CO2 levels, and then staying home with symptoms and sort of good attention to hand washing and hygiene. And there were also some good data last year that came out from several CDC studies that compared the rates among schools that didn't have that full package. And then the chance of transmitting, if somebody came in with COVID, was much, much higher, ranged from about 11 to 27%. So we see that that package of mitigation really was very protective. Unfortunately, we don't have really big data on the individual contribution of each component of that package. So it would be really helpful to know, you know, how much of that protection was due to masking alone. But we don't really have those data to help us with that question. And then Dr. Sawyer and Noel Freeman very generously shared the data from the Shrewsbury Public Schools from last year. And so to try to get a sense of what was the risk of in-school transmission, you know, in your own school district. And in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, there were about 165 people who were estimated to have been in school at any point during that infectious period. And they were in contact with 358 people in the school setting who were identified as close contacts, which usually means they were within six feet for at least 15 minutes. 223 of those, sorry, 223 of those contacts were tested. And of those, nine people tested positive and were felt to have had either a possible or a probable in-school transmission. There were a few others that were very clearly exposed and infected outside of school and not included in this tally. So that's 4% of the tested contacts. And of those nine possible or probable transmissions, five occurred in the classroom, three occurred in school sports, and one occurred in a shared staff workspace. All were with masks in place. And three people were present at school while they were symptomatic, which makes it much more likely that COVID will be transmitted. And then four transmissions were from staff and five were from students. So I think it's really fantastic that your district is willing to share these data so openly and to really help kind of understand what were the, what were the events that we saw last year in each of, in each of the school districts around Massachusetts. It's been just very important and very helpful to have these data. And I think also important to point out that this is a small proportion of the total number of people who are part of the school district overall. And so, you know, certainly there were many, many, many successful in-person learning days preserved, even though there was this, you know, modest number of introductions and contacts which reflected what was going on in the community. And then just a little bit on this, you know, I think that educators and pediatricians are definitely better positioned to speak to this. But in reviewing the data that we compiled all through last year, we had, I think, really good data to suggest that, you know, in-person learning is really essential. I think remote and virtual school worked well for some families and some students, but for the majority of students, it didn't. And there were substantially increased rates observed among students last year of depression, anxiety, substance use, obesity, deterioration in vision. And importantly, not being in school led to missed opportunities for the detection and treatment of many of these conditions that the school staff usually are attuned to watch out for in our students. There was a reduction in important educational outcomes, lower reading and math scores last year. And in each of these domains, the impact of the pandemic really exacerbated what had previously been existing already as inequities by race and class. It is really difficult to isolate the impact of sort of remote learning itself from the overall experience of living through a pandemic and all the other isolation that went along with last year, as well as all of the stress and uncertainty that went along with fear of family, you know, fear of your family members getting COVID, fear about your anxiety about all of the other circumstances that were going on in society. But the guidance from all of the organizations that have, that take care of children and make guidelines about schools are really very consistent this year. This includes the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which have all said that really preserving sort of five-day-a-week in-person learning is the priority for this year. And so what about Delta? How is this going to change how we think about this? Certainly, we know that pediatric COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations are rising across the West. It's certainly rising more quickly and to the highest levels in areas that have low vaccination rates and high case rates overall. And the trends in children really do parallel the trends in adults. So that it's not at all surprising that a certain proportion of cases that are occurring in children is increasing. That's expected as they're not able to be vaccinated, but the other age groups are. But the numbers really are going up too. And the big question kind of remains, although they're getting a substantial number of infections, are they getting sicker from Delta than they were from the previous variants? And we don't have a lot of data on that. Limited data in adults and even more limited data in children. But there have been some early data released from Canada that suggests about a two-times higher risk of hospitalization for children with Delta than the older variants. And that still needs to be confirmed and peer-reviewed. Overall, though, the risk of hospitalization is still very low, less than 2%. And we really don't know very much about long COVID or sort of prolonged symptoms after COVID infection with Delta compared to the previous variants. With Alpha and the wild-type variant, the risk was under 2% and pretty similar to non-COVID respiratory infections in children. But we really don't have the data with Delta yet. And so how will Delta change plans for this year? I think we know that it's about two-times more transmissible than the strain we had in the beginning of the school year last year. We don't have any evidence to suggest that the mitigation measures that we used last year will work less well. And we know that vaccines reduce infection risk about eightfold. But vaccinated people can still acquire infection and can still transmit infection. When they do get infected, they have viral lows that are similarly high to people who haven't been vaccinated, although for a shorter period of time. So their total contribution to onward infection is probably lower, but they can still pass the infection on. Fortunately, though, even with Delta, we know that the vaccines reduce severe illness and hospitalization and death substantially about 25-fold. So that's good news with regard to preventing severe outcomes, but does leave open the possibility of transmission. And how will it change our plans for this school year? I think, you know, as early as, sort of as recently as kind of early to mid-July, I think most of us were thinking that we would have a pretty normal school year this year. I think many districts, and Desi's guidance certainly suggested, you know, really going back to almost pre-pandemic. I think if you had asked me a month or so ago, I would have thought that we would have for sure recommended masks not being needed in the grade levels for which children are eligible for vaccination, and that we would be having a real conversation about whether masks are needed for the younger students. Because I think we felt like the vaccination rates in our towns were so high that cases were so low that we could probably reduce most of the mitigation in the schools and rely on the fact that the chance of someone coming into the school building with COVID was so low. And here are the data from Shrewsbury, and your vaccination rates are outstanding. So 12- to 15-year-olds, 84%, 16- to 19-year-olds, 92%. The age group of, you know, most of us as parents, 82 to 89%. I mean, it's really fantastic. So this all looked, I think, really, really promising until a few weeks ago, when we started to see that, you know, cases were really rising despite vaccination. And so now, I think, we need to really, across the state, districts are kind of wrestling with the need to reassess our plans and to keep, you know, keep our goals in mind. Do we want to try to avoid any SARS-CoV-2 infection that is acquired in school? Or do we want to just try to avoid enough infection that would lead to severe illness in students or educators and staff and their families? Or do we want to try to avoid the disruption of learning and loss of in-person days? And so I think that the mitigation measures that schools are deciding about now really are a function of kind of what is the outcome that we want to try to prevent from happening. So with some of this in mind, here's the sort of summary of the guidance from the CDC and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. As I mentioned earlier, both of the organizations really very strongly emphasize the priority on in-person learning. So the option for hybrid and rural education is really not being offered this year. This CDC guidance, I think it's important to put the dates because, as I mentioned, things are just changing so quickly. But CDC came out on August 4th with their guidance. They very strongly supported, as you would expect, vaccination for all eligible people 12 and up. One thing that was a little bit surprising, I think, to many people was that they recommended universal masking indoors for all people in the school setting, regardless of vaccination status of the person and regardless of case counts in the community. They recommend three-feet distancing where possible, but where not possible, it should not be a barrier to having everybody back at school. They recommend screening, testing for unvaccinated people. Continue to recommend things like hand washing and respiratory etiquette, which is like, you know, squeezing into a Kleenex and throwing it away and then washing your hands. Really important to stay home with sick and get tested as before. And they continue to emphasize the importance of contact tracing. So when someone does have COVID, identifying all their contacts, orienting their contacts, isolating that person and any contacts who test positive. And then Desi's guidance had actually come out the week before. And I just highlighted the key points where it's really kind of different from the CDC guidance. So Desi recommends masking indoors very strongly for unvaccinated people, students and and staff. They recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to be unmasked. They don't really make a clear recommendation of vaccinated staff. And so I think that that's the main difference, and I think that's where a lot of districts across Massachusetts are trying to come up with the best policy. And then they offered this year three different types of school-based testing options, which I think are really valuable. And those include diagnostic testing, which means testing for people who have symptoms, screening testing, which is, as many districts did last year, sort of weekly testing of people who are asymptomatic. And then a new option, which is called Test to Stay, which is potentially could allow people who are identified as in-school close contacts to stay in school with a weekly, with a daily rapid antigen test kind of on their way to school. So those, I think, are really interesting options that will be really helpful this year. I think a really big question is, many districts are opting to begin the year with masking for everyone. I think as they, as we are trying to figure out kind of what's going on with Delta, you know, will and when will the sort of peak of the Delta surge happen and start to go down again, as we've seen in other countries? How will it work to have everybody at school with many of the other mitigation measures relaxed this year? So without all of the distancing, without the hybrid model, you know, not wanting to pull back too many mitigation measures at the same time, I think many, many districts are sort of opting to have everyone mask as the year begins. And then I think the key question is, when can we stop? Because nobody wants to mask kids forever. So there must be some combination of high vaccination rates and low case counts in the community that will make it possible to relax the masking policies in school. And so people have really asked about, you know, what are the off-ramps? And I think it really depends on what the goal is, and I kind of come back to those same three goals that we talked about before. Do you want to try to avoid any infection in school? And we don't do that, for example, with, with other infections, flu or rhinovirus or any other condition. And so is it really more about avoiding severe illness? Or is it some combination where in order to try to really provide reassurance to families, maybe who were in remote school last year and are coming back with some uncertainty this year, or to avoid disruption in learning just from having people meeting to quarantine and isolate? Maybe you have a more conservative goal and try to avoid, you know, most infections occurring in school. So some colleagues that I have been working with are actually trying to answer some of these questions using a computer model. And, you know, all models are really reliant on a number of assumptions, and there's a substantial uncertainty in the, in the assumptions and in the results. But I think they can give us a really helpful kind of rough order of magnitude to know kind of what would the thresholds need to be in terms of community COVID-19 incidence that might make us think about the ability to pull back on masking, for example. And so here's a set of results that I thought might be helpful to share. So if you assume that whatever mitigation we have in the schools without adding masking is about 40% effective in reducing transmission risk. So that would be like opening the windows and having HEPA filters, washing hands, staying home and sick. Sort of how effective those are in reducing that secondary attack rate that we talked about earlier is not well studied, but many experts have estimated around 40%. So if you, if that's the case, then, then if the goal, for example, for a single school over a single month was to prevent, for example, three additional cases. So by having in-person school, prevent adding at least three cases to the community, where the community is students, educator staff, and their household members. Then in an elementary school, for example, where no students are vaccinated, you would add or remove masks at a threshold of around 400,000 per day. So the rate that you see published, you know, on the DPH website every day. At the high school, where 80% of people are vaccinated, it would be similar, actually, about 300,000 per day. And if someday, hopefully, we get a vaccination approved for kids under 12, and you could get 50% of the elementary school vaccinated, then that 4 goes up to about 13. So if you're willing to tolerate five added cases or 10 added cases, then those thresholds go up quite a lot. And if you wanted to take a more conservative approach and say, well, actually, you would rather there not be any in-school transmission, so I'm going to say I'm not willing to accept more than a 50% chance, for example, of in-school transmission, then in the elementary school with no students vaccinated, you would, I'm asking at about 300,000 per day, and in the high school at about 400,000 per day. And so for comparison, Shrewsbury's current rate is about 8.7 and Worcester County's about 15. So I think, you know, one of the reasons that we're feeling like there is some uncertainty is because we're kind of hovering around these thresholds. And so it really comes back to a decision about, you know, what, what are the goals of the community and what kind of outcomes do we want to prevent with our mitigation measures in school? And I'll skip this one, it's just to say that there's another, they've done a very similar model that found very similar results, which I always find reassuring. So maybe I'll stop there and answer questions that people have, and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Serenello. Appreciate your time. As always, colleagues, any questions or comments for Dr. Serenello?
Let's start.
Yeah. I think one, one thing that's fairly obvious to anybody watching this is, is we are hearing recommendations for everyone masking indoors, and we're sitting here without a mask. You might want to just clarify what policy we're following right now and answer that question.
Sure. From perspective of this meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, so I know for the town hall, in terms of protocol, you need to wear masks as you're walking through the hallways, and once you're distanced six feet, the committees that meet in this, in this room can unmask. So that is, that is the current guideline.
At the moment, basically, we're, we're following protocols, and we're, we're all in for the protocols. But the protocol at the moment is if you're vaccinated, you're distanced, you're not getting close to anyone, that you can take your mask off, which is, is what we did when we came in here.
Correct.
But that may change, and we may be talking through our masks next, next meeting.
Good point. Ms. Fritz, yeah?
Just a couple of questions. I know one of the things we've talked about or is being talked about publicly is, you know, COVID-19 is never going to go away. It's never going to be eradicated completely. We will manage it like other viruses through history, through vaccination. So can you speak to that? Because I know some people think that it will go away, but we need to be able to manage it through medical, you know, with vaccination, and then we'll be, you know, how we live with it going forward. Could you speak to that?
Was that question for me? I think so.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks. I think it's a really good question. I think one of the things I have learned about COVID is that we're not very good at predicting its trajectory. So I don't know whether it will go away. I think it will probably be around forever in some sort of endemic way, kind of like flu. I hope that we'll get to a place where we think of it like where most people are vaccinated, where we don't, you know, think about it very often, and we'll go back to our normal day. I think we're, you know, we're not obviously at that point yet. So I think a lot of the conversation around kind of like how much we're going to ask our kids to do for mitigation in schools this year has focused on that. And I think people differ kind of in their readiness to move on to that sort of endemic tolerance. And I think, you know, certainly we're seeing a surge, we're seeing new variants that we don't understand very much about yet. We don't really know how, if or how much they will cause more severe disease, for example, particularly in children. So I think my, my own personal sort of take on that is that I, I feel like we need a little bit more time to be really cautious, to try to do all the things that we know work to keep in-person schooling safe. I don't think we'll be there forever, and I think that's important for people to understand that when people are talking about masking in schools, for example, you know, no one wants this to be going on forever, and that's why I think it's important to, to really try to, to do these kind of analyses, to figure out when we might be able to pull back. Some people aren't already to, to sort of move on. And I think people talk about, well, you know, there are pediatric deaths, for example, from drumming and car accidents, and we don't change our whole world around that. But I think we do do a lot of things to try to prevent that. So we do teach kids how to swim and put up fences and pool covers and wear ski boots and put in airbags. So I think it's important to do what we can do, especially when the interventions that we have are really safe and effective, to, to try to facilitate in-person schooling and to really try to make people feel, people particularly who were, who may have been remote last year or who were really uncertain about coming back to in-person schooling, to try to make those families and students feel comfortable for as long as possible in this kind of transition period.
Thank you. I have a second question, if you don't mind. I have a second question for you as well, and I know it's kind of a hot button in the public right now as well, because we talk about mitigation efforts and things that have to be done, and you kind of touched upon it, you know, if you have a pool, you have to, by law, put a fence around that piece of property that you have. And we talk about, some people feel there is a risk to wearing a mask, and none of us like wearing a mask. Can you talk about maybe some of, is there a risk or is that something that really, there isn't a risk? Is there anything that you can talk about that issue?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think it's really important to emphasize that really masks are safe and they're very effective. And we can talk about sort of the categories of data that we have in each of those statements, but I, I just want to say those two things so clearly, like they're very safe and they're very effective. In terms of the risks that come from them, you know, I kind of think about potential harms in two categories. One is kind of developmental and educational, sort of how much does masking impair social emotional learning and reading and speech acquisition? And for that, I would very much defer to the educators and pediatricians. But the empiric data that we've been able to see, kind of good quality published studies, really don't indicate detriments in those areas. So, you know, interesting studies about how children can actually perceive emotion and social emotional views from the eyes, as well as they can from the lower half of the face, and techniques that people can use to really, to really improve communication through masking. And also, I think, if we are able to make the school a safer place by having masks for most people, then if there are particular educational settings in which it's helpful to unmask, maybe like English language learners or special education speech therapy type contractions, or for very young kids, then I think you've kind of created like a buffer, like a safety zone where you can unmask in certain situations where it's needed, especially if a staff member is vaccinated, for example. So that sort of social emotional learning piece of masking, I think, you know, I'll let the educators speak a bit more to that. In terms of the physiologic harms of masking, there really are none. And there have been a number of studies that people have cited that I think it's really hard to tease out, like from what's on the internet, what's good quality science and what's not. But I think the good quality science is all very clear. So you don't fill up carbon dioxide in your blood from wearing a mask. You don't have lower oxygen levels from wearing a mask. I think the one exception that I saw was, you know, full exertion sprinting on a treadmill, then there's a little dip at the very peak of exertional levels there. But in all normal activities, including sort of mild, mildly active people, there's no harm there. You can get some bacterial and fungal type skin infections from wearing a mask that's wet for too many hours. So I think it's important, of course, to like put on a clean mask, wear a dry mask, and change it regularly, wash the cloth mask if you're using a cloth mask. You can get some irritation of the glands in the eyes. It's usually not infectious, and you can't really sort of infect yourself with your own flora. So like the bacteria from your nose don't usually get into your eyes and do much harm. But you can sort of irritate them and then cause skin bacteria to get in there. So I think it's important to like not have it touch your eyes and to not touch your eyes with dirty hands while adjusting your mask. But those are kind of the physiologic harms I think people worried about. And I, I think it's important to kind of reading what's on the internet to realize that, you know, this isn't a pandemic where we knew nothing about it at the beginning. And there really were, you know, I think people are seeing kind of scientific method play out in real time. So you might find a paper, for example, from March of 2020 that raised a question about one of these issues. And it may be a paper by a really good set of scientists in a really good journal, and you might see it cited now, but what you may not see cited are the, you know, 57 other studies that followed on and showed that actually those things did not pan out. And that's how science works. You know, we do something, a psychosis generating, we try to test it, and then we find out more. So I think it's really hard to, to piece through the literature kind of unless you really spent months and months trying to go through all of it. So I'm just passionate about what you see online about the harms of masking, because there really are very many.
Great, thank you.
It was just actually a follow-up to Dr. McGee's comment, and it might be more appropriate for the next agenda item for the superintendent to address, but Dr. McGee, I think, very helpfully pointed out that we here are following a COVID protocol for the benefit of those who are watching, we're all spaced six feet. In the good old days of yore, we used to be able to all fit around this bench here, and now there's table extensions. And maybe for the next agenda item, just to put upon the superintendent to reference the fact that for students in school, six feet of distancing is not the norm, and that's certainly something we have to consider. So just a follow-up to what Dr. McGee said, but again, perhaps more appropriate for the next agenda item.
Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I predominantly want to just thank you, Dr. Serenello, for giving us, I think what's important is that we base our decisions as best we can on science and data presented to us, and that I look back, it's, it's what we ask of our students, and so I go back to being, being a good global citizen, is that you're not just thinking about yourself. Public health is about those around you as, as well, and that we be, that we demonstrate some real critical thinking skills and be asking the, asking a lot of questions. So sharing both your slides and the questions tonight, I think, are really very, very helpful and important inputs for us, as well as the letter from Dr. Hirsch with, with his suggestions about, about the directions that we move, so that we, as a committee, sort of continually go back and reassess as we, as we need to and as this, as the situation has changed. So predominantly, I just want to thank you for making sure that we have the best that's in front of us. I, for the last eight weeks, happily took off thinking about all of these things and getting back into what the data says is really very, very helpful. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And I also like to thank you, Dr. Serenello, appreciate the time. Do agree with Ms. Heffernan too, with regards to following and making data-driven decisions as we progress. I think it's important to the, the health and safety of the, the students and staff in all of our schools. So thank you so much. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
No, just as, as I appreciate Dr. Serenello's time and expertise, and maybe just asking her if there's anything else that she thinks that the committee or that the Shrewsbury community who's tuning in should just sort of summarize or takeaways, you know, knowing your perspective both as a physician and a parent, just thinking about coming up with the, the opening of school and things we should be considering.
Oh, thank you. I, I think we've talked about almost everything. I gave you a little bit of my personal take at the end there, in addition to the science. And I just appreciate the thoughtfulness with which your committee is thinking about all of these issues. I know it's not easy. It feels like kind of, again, this year, each district is left to make their own decision. So that is difficult. But thank you. And I'm happy to answer more questions, you know, Dr. Sawyer knows how to reach me, if anything comes up as, as you're thinking about these plans or as the year goes on.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time. Thank you, Dr. Serenello.
Take care, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is another time-scheduled appointment with regards to COVID-19 mitigation protocols for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Sawyer will present recommendations for the next school year with regards to protocols relative to areas including in-person learning, masking, physical distancing, school ventilation, and other operational considerations. I will also have Ms. Freeman here as well via Zoom, I believe, and she'll be providing information regarding updated state requirements for quarantining and close contacts. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Winsky. I appreciate it. And on the heels of the public comment this evening and Dr. Serenello's presentation, I'm pleased to present some information regarding what the consensus recommendation is from our leadership team as far as protocols that we believe we should follow to have a successful opening of the new 2021-22 school year. Again, you know, much to be excited about in terms of what's ahead of us and in return to certainly more normalcy is something that we are anticipating. At the same time, with some of the uncertainty with the COVID landscape that was just described, we believe it's also prudent to be, take a bit more of a conservative approach as we, as we begin. First slide here, I just want to emphasize that the primary goal that we have is to provide full-time in-school learning for students with minimal disruptions. And that is a pretty short sentence, but it's a really important concept. I think that it's important for people to recognize and realize that that is, and I know Dr. Serenello mentioned this in her presentation, the recommendation of every major national medical, public health organization, educational organization, is the importance of providing in-person school at this point in the evolving pandemic. And I certainly concur with that, and so does our, our leadership team. There are a whole host of reasons for that, that, that host of reasons for that, that, and certainly, as Dr. Serronello cited, the issues around certainly student, social, emotional, mental health, well-being is, is paramount among them, as well as their educational progress, and a return to an in-person setting so students can connect with educators so that all the things that our educators do for students that are able to be done better in person can happen, including picking up on some of the issues that students may be having that can't be noticed when students are fully remote or, or in a hybrid model. It's important to note as well that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has made it abundantly clear that they are not counting remote learning as qualifying for compulsory attendance in public school this year. So our district is not providing a remote program, and that is not an option that, that families will have. The in-person program is the only option that we'll be providing as a school district, and the only one that is sanctioned by the state. In terms of, you know, families' options with regard to that, you know, if, certainly if a student does need to miss school due to a short-term illness or because they do need to quarantine, which we're trying to minimize, they will be able to have opportunities to keep up with or make up schoolwork just as they would in a typical year if a student had a case of the flu or chickenpox or whatever it might be that kept them out of school. If a school, if a student needs to miss school for more than 14 days, there's longstanding practice that's, that's dictated by state law and policy that the school district does provide support and alternative educational support for those students. So if there's a student who has a long-term illness, whatever the reason for that may be, we do provide that through various means as part of the home hospital tutoring approach and so forth. However, if a family does ultimately decide that they are not comfortable with in-person schooling, their options essentially are to either homeschool their child, and we will be, when we send out this information, we will send out some information about how families can do that, if that is what they choose to do, as some families do each year regardless of the situation. They could attempt to enroll their child in an approved Commonwealth virtual school. There are two in the, in the state where if they're able to enroll, and there are, I believe, some openings at certain levels, others where there's waiting lists. And I know that the Commonwealth asked those schools to expand their enrollment if they could, knowing that it'd be with some demand. Or otherwise enroll them, perhaps in an approved private school that might be offering something different or something that the family's more comfortable with. But just to make it clear, our school district will not be offering a, a remote learning program for students who are, would be learning from home. So it's very different from the situation last year. But again, the primary goal, and, and because, again, it's recommended and we think it's the best thing for students and, and experts agree, is to have full-time in-school learning for all of our students and trying to minimize any disruption to that. There are going to be several key mitigation protocols that we have in order to achieve that. The first, and then one that's been first and foremost on people's minds, is what the recommendation will be with regard to masking. And our recommendation is to start the year to have universal masking in all of our schools at all age levels for inside of school buildings. That is based on both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrician's recommendations, as well as local public health recommendations, including the recommendation you've received from Dr. Hirsch. And along with the uncertainty that Dr. Serronello mentioned with some increased case counts happening, increased positivity rates, and some uncertainty regarding what the impact of the Delta variant will be. And we're in sort of a funny timeframe right now to see how it is going to impact Massachusetts. There is the hope that, given the very high rates of vaccination in Massachusetts, it will not have the kind of effect it's having elsewhere in the United States where vaccination rates are lower. But it is something that we, there's still, any of the experts we've spoken to, including Dr. Serronello, we're just not quite sure how that's going to evolve in the coming weeks. We do, I do want to emphasize that we will and are committed to continuously monitoring our local and regional and state COVID-19 data, and will continue to review any updated guidance that comes to determine if and when the masking requirement can be relaxed. And that's the intent, is at some point in the future to relax it. I don't have a date certain that we think it's going to be a, a good time to say this is when we should make a decision. It's going to be under constant scrutiny. And when we meet together with the school committee, we'll continue to provide you with updates, as we did last year, on case counts and positivity rates, and if there is a recommendation to make a change in that in any way. Again, the emphasis is on keeping students in school. One of the benefits of masking is not only does it reduce the risk of transmission, but it also reduces the need to quarantine for close contacts. The close contact regulations, and Ms. Freeman will speak to that a bit more specifically in a few minutes, is that it's a three-foot distance requirement if both individuals are masked in a classroom setting, as opposed to the six-foot close contact that applies elsewhere. So we can keep our unvaccinated students in school with, with, without having to quarantine them under close contact rules more readily with a masking mandate in place. And then finally, you know, the, Dr. Serronello mentioned, and certainly it's well-known from the, the news, that there is conflicting recommendations between some of these national organizations and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, whose recommendation is that vaccinated individuals in schools could have the option, whether to wear a mask. That is not our recommendation at this time. It could be something we move to in the future. I will say that it's important to note that the management of that kind of approach, especially at the start of a school year where it's already such a, a key transition, coming back from the year we just had, opening a new school, all the other things that we have happening. If that were the case, and that would be the case, of course, likely for grade seven through 12, if we took that approach at Oak Middle School and Shrewsbury High School, for roughly 3,000 students, to try to manage who has the option and who doesn't, we have not made it a, a point to collect information from families or ask them to provide documentation. We do have families, unless they have, have prevented it, there are nursing, our nurses, as part of our medical record software, it does communicate with the state database. So we do have specific information of people who have been vaccinated, but that's not universal. And there may be cases where, that we're not aware of. But even as you can imagine, in, in a, in a school, to try to determine who it is that has that option and who doesn't among adolescents who, whose primary goal is not always to follow the rules to a T, and may have other social pressures or peer pressures why they might want to choose to opt to not wear a mask even if they don't qualify. And that is not something, frankly, that would be a good use of time and energy for the very beginning of the school year. And there is complexity there, and I think it would detract from the kind of smooth reopening that we are intending to have. So for those reasons, my recommendation, the recommendation of our team, is to begin the school year with universal masking inside all of our school buildings, all ages, regardless of vaccination status. The second protocol is around physical distancing. There is no longer any state mandate regarding distancing between students, among students in classrooms. We do intend to follow the CDC guideline, which essentially says to maintain three feet where that is possible with the emphasis on returning to full in-person school. And there are going to be situations where we are going to intend to provide a more normalized school experience. There will be times when there will be less than three feet distancing. That's in order to provide more normal classroom instructional situations, including flexible seating, small group work, the ability to, to have what would be more of a typical instructional environment that we had pre-COVID. Also, we feel strongly that providing a typical lunch experience to students in order to promote more normal socialization is important. We've heard that anecdotally from students. We heard that loud and clear from some of the thought exchange, online exchange feedback we received from families and from staff. And it's something that we think is a reasonable balance of the risk in order to have, rather than having lunches as we did last year with six-foot distancing, taking over all our gymnasium space, individual desks, not really being able to talk very much to people around you. I know a lot of students have cited that as very problematic in terms of their own perception of how school is going for them and their ability to socialize with their peers. So that is something that we intend to provide. And again, we will do what we can to emphasize, you know, outdoor eating where we can, finishing eating and getting kids outside to recess, out in the fresh air. We are going to be maximizing our, our fresh air exchanges in our cafeterias where there are windows, we'll keep them open. And just the HVAC system will be running to maximize fresh air exchange well beyond the minimum that's required under, under guidelines. So that's something that is our intention relative to physical distancing, again, to create more of a normalized school environment as students return. Third, and I'll ask Ms. Freeman to speak to this more specifically, are some updated state requirements with regard to quarantine and close contacts. And some of those updates have to do with the fact that whether or not an individual is vaccinated makes a big difference in how we approach that with an individual. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Freeman, if we can bring her up on the screen, and she'll provide a little bit more specific, specifics about that.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. So we did receive updated requirements and recommendations from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education at the end of last week. It's important to note that those recommendations and protocols were developed in collaboration with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to help us determine how to safely manage quarantine, close contacts, and evaluation of symptoms and things like that, that we had in place last year, but kind of, there was a few changes moving into this year that I'll just highlight. So the definition of close contact has not changed. It is still, close contact means that you were within six feet of an infected individual for 15 minutes or more during a 24-hour period. So for our purposes, that is, for, we look at each school day separately. But the contact is cumulative, if it's in chunks of more than five minutes. So that definition has not changed, but they did add some exemptions for quarantine. So the following people would not need to quarantine if identified as a close contact at school. People who are fully vaccinated and have no symptoms, there's, it's important to note that there is a difference in people who have symptoms and do not have symptoms, even if you're vaccinated. Classroom contacts who are at a distance of three or more feet, as long as both people are masked in the classroom, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, those people will not have to quarantine if they are identified as a close contact at the three to six-foot distance. Contacts on the school bus will not need to quarantine, as everyone does need to be masked by federal regulation on buses. So we know that everyone will be masked on buses, and with the windows open, people will not be considered close contacts on the bus regardless of the distance they are to the, the person who's diagnosed with COVID. And then anyone who has had COVID-19 in the last 90 days is also not considered someone who needs to quarantine if they are close contact. That has been in place throughout. So when we are looking at people who are close contacts, if we have a case at school, I should say when we have a case at school because it's likely to happen, just like it did last year. So we're going to look at a couple of different things. So close contacts who are not symptomatic and do not fall into one of those exemption categories will have the option for test and stay, which has been mentioned by Dr. Serronello, as an option for us to limit the interruptions in school attendance. So the test and stay, just briefly, involves the use of the Binax Now rapid antigen test, which is available through the state. We, as a district, are in process of applying to the state program that's being offered and includes a variety of testing options, one of which is this Binax Now test and stay. So if someone is found to be a close contact at school, and they are not symptomatic, and they are not vaccinated, because if they're vaccinated, they would be exempt from this, they would be, in order to continue coming to school, they would need to be tested with the Binax Now for seven days from the time of their last contact with the person who's positive for COVID. So each morning, they would come into school during that seven-day period, and they would be given a rapid antigen test, as long as they continue to be asymptomatic and they test negative, they are permitted to stay in school. They need to wear masks. At this point, everybody will be wearing masks, but if we got to a point where we pull back on that mask requirement, anyone in this situation would need to do strict masking throughout the school day for their seven days. And so again, they'd be able to stay in school as long as they are asymptomatic, and they do that test every day. The other option for testing is, would be the same as last year. If people don't want to do the daily test, they would need to be out of school, be tested on day five with a PCR test outside of school, and if they are negative and remain asymptomatic, they can return on day eight. And if someone chooses not to be tested as a close contact and they have no symptoms for the 10 days, they can return on day 11. Again, that has been in place as quarantine protocol since last December. Anyone who does test positive will follow the same protocols that have always been in place. A positive individual needs to be in isolation for 10 days from either their symptom onset or their positive test, whichever comes first. And then their symptoms need to be significantly resolved. And I do just want to note that another of our key mitigation protocols will be continuing to make sure that people are evaluating themselves for symptoms and staying home if sick, both students and staff, vaccinated and unvaccinated. The, the state has updated the list of symptoms. The symptom list is pretty much the same, but several of the symptoms now have the note that they don't kind of count unless they're in combination with other symptoms. So last year, a sore throat, for example, just a sore throat would require you to stay home or go home and be tested. This year, a sore throat needs to be in combination with one of the other symptoms. So that information is detailed in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education protocols document that will be shared. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Freeman. And Ms. Freeman will be available for questions after we finish the presentation as well on this or any other issues that you have questions about. The next piece I want to mention is ventilation. We'll get to that next slide in a moment. There we go. We are going to continue the approach we've used over the past year, which is to have enhanced ventilation in order to maximize fresh air exchange. We're going to be continuing to open windows wherever possible. We did, partway through last year, we provided air purifiers for spaces that are occupied that do not have the benefit of being able to open the window for additional fresh air. All of the spaces, just through the normal HVA system, are able to get the amount of exchanges that are recommended. But since spaces with windows had that additional opportunity, we felt that was an additional layer that would be appropriate for windowless spaces. But maybe at this point, if anyone might, I'll ask Mr. Collins just to talk a little bit about his work with the Public Buildings Division in some of the, just to remind the committee and the community as to some of the things that we have been doing and will continue to do when it comes to our HVAC and our ventilation.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And I know that you mentioned some of those protocols that will be in place for the upcoming school year that were also part and parcel of last school year. I guess I would just add two additional items, one being that, you know, all of these building HVAC systems are on, you know, computerized building management systems. And so those will be programmed like they were last school year to begin before the school day opened. school day opens, several hours before the school day opens, to begin running to circulate air before school opens. Of course, all during the course of the day and then also after the school day ends as well to sort of kind of flush, if you will, plenty of fresh air throughout the building. And then the other just additional strategy will be to, in our cafeteria spaces, not only run the HVAC system, which, you know, basically is fan-operated systems to push and pull air through building spaces, but to also open the dampers a little bit wider to let in more fresh air. So, you know, the challenge will be in the winter months, of course, kind of maintaining temperature in that kind of environment. But all those things, in addition to what Dr. Sawyer mentioned, which is, you know, the systems are, were fully vetted at, before last school year, continue to be well-maintained and monitored closely by public building staff, Mr. Keith Baldinger and his crew, and also contractors. So we have a high degree of confidence about those systems operating as efficiently as possible and also providing the required ventilation that is needed under these conditions. So happy to elaborate if folks have any questions.
All right, thank you. So we'll move through with this other further question. Mr. Collins is available. We are also going to continue this year with our surveillance testing that we began last year. That's our intent. This would be voluntary entirely for students and staff for the purpose of early identification of asymptomatic infections, as well as the peace of mind. I know it brought to a lot of people, certainly myself and my family, last year from participating. This year, we are going to be shifting the program. The cost of the testing is going to be borne by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education through a statewide program. We are waiting for some details. We are hoping to continue a very similar program to what we had last year, which was, we felt very efficient in terms of not requiring a lot of time or virtually no time for students at school to be tested because it was an at-home swabbing program and pooled testing. We are waiting to determine that they've definitely selected a front-facing vendor that's going to work with all school districts. There are some labs behind that vendor, one of which we were intending to work with, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to move that forward as we intend. And we're waiting some details from the state before we can move ahead. But our intent is to provide that pooled testing, again, and surveillance testing for those reasons. Next, I want to mention just again, hand hygiene. There'll be continued emphasis on that. Frequent hand washing, frequent hand sanitizing. We'll continue to have hand sanitizer available within our classrooms and in different spots throughout our schools. That's, that's a habit that I think the, you know, students developed very well last year, and then our staff will continue to emphasize going forward. That's part of the layers of mitigation that are recommended by all of the public health and medical groups. In addition to that, cleaning, that's one thing that certainly evolved over the course of last year. During the first part of last year, there was a very heavy emphasis on high levels of cleaning throughout the day, misting at night, you know, with antibacterial sprays and so forth. Over time, again, as we've learned more about the pandemic, it was determined that spread through surfaces was very minimal. And the CDC updated its guidance to have one sort of typical cleaning each evening. We are going to provide some additional personnel in cafeterias to ensure that we can do that table cleaning thoroughly between lunches, since that's a high-touch environment in an environment without masks. And then beyond that, we still will be providing some cleaning supplies within classrooms. If teachers feel it's prudent in certain cases to do some additional cleaning, they'll be able to do that. But the situation we had last year, which we went away from in the spring, where earlier in the year, we had, you know, desks wiped down between each class and things like that, that that was determined by public health experts to not be necessary. And certainly, it's not appropriate or necessary to do, to over-clean or overuse. I mean, the substances we use are safe, but we want to do what the minimum that is required. And of course, if there is, if and when there is a positive case and it's not found, you typically find those out after school, and the overnight cleaning, we take care of it. But even if it's during the school day, we'll certainly do thorough cleaning of the appropriate spaces if we do have a positive case that's been in certain places. Again, same as we did last year. One difference this year is that we do plan to return to holding events, having visitors, allowing volunteers. This is going to be allowed at this point with indoor masking. We are going to need to make some determinations. And again, we're sort of trying to navigate where things are going in terms of events with larger audiences, whether those might be modified in certain ways, whether that's large student audiences, large parent audiences. But right now, just as people are able to go into large spaces, supermarkets, malls, et cetera, you know, we are planning on having our open houses and our orientations in the coming week plus. But again, people will need to wear masks should the school committee approve this plan. Masking will be required for people when they're indoors. Classroom volunteering, that will likely get started a little bit later in the fall. Typically, under even in normal circumstances, teachers like to get routines going with the students before they start introducing parent volunteers. This year might be a little longer than typical, just again, it's going to depend on where we're at, and this is a, this is a transition we haven't undergone before. So we want to make sure we're giving appropriate time for teachers to be able to be ready to do that. So we appreciate people's patience. I know plenty of parents are eager to get in and to help, and we always appreciate their help. Music and athletics have been on people's minds as well. I am very pleased to indicate that we are going to return to having our chorus and band and orchestra ensemble classes at the middle and the high school level, as well as fourth grade chorus. Those will be held with different modifications, masking, for example, putting bells on trumpets and other kinds of brass instruments, et cetera, and wind instruments, et cetera. That's the, we were following protocols with that last year. There are no protocols issued at this point by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but I know that the Massachusetts, the Music Educators Association has issued some guidelines based on some national recommendations and studies, and we will be following those to the extent we think is prudent in making sure that those situations are, again, mitigation layers are in place to make them as safe as possible. As far as athletics, we'll continue to hold in this classic athletics. The MIAA guidelines will be followed. There are no specific guidelines at this point that have been issued. We're waiting to see if there's any of those that come out. But we are beginning those high school athletics very soon, and OK Athletics once the school year begins. And again, we think that's part of, in parcel. And last year, we were very pleased we were able to have athletics, and we know that that was a major positive for many students. And one of the things, few things that they did felt was normalizing their situation at school and for all the benefits that are normally, I think they're enhanced even further under the situation. So that will be for music and athletics. So those are the protocols that I wanted to summarize for you this evening. The school committee has a detailed document that's been sent to them. But just in conclusion, I want to emphasize again that this fall really is a unique and an important transition for our schools. That's for everyone, for our students, our families, our staff members. And I think it's really important to note, and I'll be sharing out some more information about this. I appreciate everyone who took part in the two different online exchanges, one that families had and one that staff had. And both groups really identified mental health and students' social and emotional needs, as well as staff's, as extremely important to address. It was very, very consistent and highly rated that that needs to be our primary focus coming into the year. Obviously, the central purpose of schools is for students to learn. And that learning, of course, takes many forms, whether that's academic learning or learning how to become a terrific human being. But in terms of what's important coming out of the gate, the last thing we want people worried about is somehow hurrying to make up for our lost ground. First off, a lot of our students did quite well as a result of the support of families, some extraordinary work on behalf of our educators and support staff. And, you know, we're going to continue to be assessing over time where our kids are relative to typical benchmarks. But we feel we're in a pretty strong place overall, all things considered. That said, there's clearly been an impact on students. I think what we're hearing and what we're concerned about is that some of that impact about students' learning may be more related to actually their social and emotional well-being than it is to any academic piece that they had, that they were concerned about. So certainly, we're going to make sure that they're where they need to get to academically. We're not going to rush and race to do that. And we're going to make sure that first and foremost, we're making sure our kids feel comfortable, kids feel safe, kids feel accepted, and that they feel a very strong sense of belonging. And again, more of a return to normalcy around their socialization and all the benefits they get from in-person to school, which certainly, after not having it to the extent that we would have liked over the past year plus, we value it more than we ever have. So I think that's an important understanding I want people to have. And then, again, this is about balancing risk. There are never going to be a situation where we have zero risk for lots of things in our schools, but including COVID. And as Dr. Serenello mentioned in her presentation, we have to be calibrating for ourselves. What level of risk are we willing to tolerate? We're fortunate that we're still a low-incidence community. We're fortunate that we're still a low positivity rate community. We hope that that stays that way. It remains to be seen. We cannot predict how this is going to evolve. But we are going to balance, you know, we're not taking an approach that's as strict as it was when we had remote learning and hybrid and six feet apart. And that's a very purposeful decision and recommendation because we believe providing a more robust in-person learning experience is beneficial to our students. So that's balanced off with using masks to start the year. That's why that is our recommendation to balance that off. But in bold, the last point is that we certainly remain committed to the health and the safety and well-being of everyone who's part of our school community. That is our top priority, and we look forward to doing our very best to provide the best education possible holistically to our students and to make sure we're supporting our staff and providing the opportunities for our families to support their children. I'm extremely proud of the work that we did over the past year plus, and I am certain that we are going to continue to make the community proud as we enter into this next school year. So those are the recommendations that we have for the school committee. I'm happy to answer any questions, as are Ms. Freeman or any of the other administrators who are here this evening.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, Ms. Freeman, and Mr. Collins. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Just no questions, just some comments. I want to thank Dr. Sawyer and his team for putting together the presentation tonight. I also want to thank all of the medical and public health experts who took the time to not only address us this evening and communicate with us in writing, but also who took the time to advise this district as this plan was very carefully and very thoughtfully developed. To me, this is a decision about student safety and student health. This is not a political decision. I intend to listen to the experts. It is clear to me that the risk is higher than we would like, and as such, I support the recommendation before us this evening. And I want to emphasize that this is a decision for me about student safety and health, and this is not a political choice. I respect and value all of the public feedback. We received both the public feedback. We solicited through the thought exchange, some of the emails that were sent to the committee. I will read every piece of public feedback, always do that we receive. I will always reflect on it carefully. I always welcome people to comment to us, and I value their opinion. Having said that, this is never a decision that I would make based on who is the loudest voice or who has the most signatures on their advocacy letter. This is about student safety and health, and I support the recommendation before us.
I also support the recommendation and everything that Mr. Palace said. I'd like to highlight a couple of things that Dr. Serenello said, and one is that we're witnessing the science evolving here real time. And science is always messy. It's, there are always a lot of dead ends. It's important for us to understand that we need to keep our finger on the pulse. We need to understand the research as it unfolds and make the safest decision we can at this moment in time. The other piece is that the whole equation has become more complicated by the fact that not only do we have unfolding science, but we have the delta variant thrown into the equation, which could make things worse and which, I think, means that our responsibility is to be as conservative and safety-minded as possible and make decisions which are not only good for the individual, but also good for the community as a whole. I think one of the most important things that we can think of when we put that mask on is that we're not only taking care of ourselves, but we're also benefiting the rest of our community, and that is something which everybody who puts a mask on should feel good about. So I strongly recommend this, this approach that we're doing. I also support the fact that we have had an information system in this district that has been better than anything I've seen elsewhere. And the fact that we're continuing to measure our results and publish them for the community is a very important thing. We're comforting the community with how safe the institution is, and we're contributing to the information that is known about this virus and allowing others to learn from our experience.
Yeah, I agree with everything both of my colleagues have said. I think this is an issue that's been very polarizing in the media. We're seeing lots of issues in many areas across the country. And it's not a political issue. It's not something that we should be worrying about the optics of the decision that we're making. Like Jason said, it's about the health and well-being and safety of students and staff. And the goal for us is in-person learning. We need to make sure that students are in class and learning. Last year was a year that we never want to repeat. We know that Desi had said, has said there's no remote learning. Dr. Sawyer had said it won't even count. We are, we have to be in-person in learning, so that is the goal. So how do we support that goal as we move forward? And that, it's a balance of safety, education, and well-being for all. And we look at that risk analysis and we weigh that risk with this COVID pandemic that we've been dealing with. And we have mitigation methods. We know that they work. And none of us want to wear a mask going forward for a long period of time, but what do we do to circle back to that goal that we're dealing with at school committee members? And, and that's that in-person education. And we did have the thought exchange, and that number one piece from families and from staff was the mental health and well-being of everyone involved, as well as that safety piece. So I fully support this. I think it's a proactive and a preventative measure going forward. I would ask that as a committee, that each time that we meet, we continue to assess this policy and look where the rates are with COVID in our community from a medical standpoint, what we're looking at from the CDC, from the FDA, and just continue to look at the policy as we go forward and where we should move with any of these pieces as we move forward. But I fully support this as we open school.
I am also supportive of the approach, Dr. Sawyer, and of all, all of your staff, and certainly support the evidence that we had before us tonight to consider this seems like the right move to keep kids and educators safe and keep them in the classroom. That's, that seems pretty straightforward to me at this point in time, in addition to the other measures of mitigation around pool testing and ventilation, et cetera. Well, I think it's important that we keep an eye on this. I also want to, we have a lot of business that COVID has taken us away from intention-wise for the last year and a year, year and a half plus. And so I'd offer to my colleagues that we might want to consider revisiting this issue in four weeks into the school year or maybe at the close of the first quarter. Every two weeks to have another presentation with the doctors and the medical professionals and not talking about the education and the impacts of our, of our kids. While I think this is important, I'd like us all to consider the possibility. Surely, should the science change dramatically, we always have the opportunity to revisit this. But certainly tonight, I'm very much in favor of, of the recommendations posed to make sure we open our schools safely.
Do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, and first off, I'd like to thank the public for their engagement on this topic over the last eight weeks. I think we received about 12 to 15 emails, 12 to 15 emails, and also for public participation today. I think at the end of the day, the health and safety of our staff and students is paramount, right? We know the goal, which is clearly stated about providing full-time, in-person learning with minimal disruptions. And when I think about goals, I think about how you introduce potential risk to those goals. We know COVID cases are potential disruptions, and we're also dealing with a more highly transmissible variant. I do support the mitigation package as presented by Dr. Sawyer. I feel it gives us a consistent strategy from last year. You know, we ended the school year last year wearing masks. I know it's become a hot topic, and I think the difference between when we ended the school year last year and we started the current school year, we're about to start it on September 1st, is that we've seen the case counts getting increasingly worse, right? So I think it, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, I think it's important to follow the data and make data-driven decisions out of the interest of keeping our students and staff safe. So with that, are there any further comments? We will be taking a vote on this mitigation protocol that Dr. Sawyer has presented. So I need a motion that the committee vote to endorse the protocols for the opening of the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. of the 2021, 2022 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on June 23, 2021 were enclosed. Any revisions for that's there being none, they will be approved as written. So we do have to head into executive session tonight. Let me just get my, so I will need a motion to adjourn for the purposes of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair. So declares Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or cafeteria workers, and for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose 2, nonrepresented secretaries, clerical IT staff, and/or administrators, including the superintendent of schools, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.